We'll just give everybody a minute to enter the town chambers. Are there more people?
Okay.
Well, this is just a pleasure and a delight opening this meeting with so many wonderful people in the town chambers. With that said, I'd like to call to order the town council regular session at 7:40, and the date is Monday, January 28th. And if we could please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have the roll call, Dale?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Donnelly.
Here.
Councilwoman Haley.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. At this time, we have the proud moment of swearing in two new police officers and three promotions. This town council is delighted, and at this time, we would like to turn it over to Chief Espia.
I was wondering if anybody wanted to misbehave tonight.
We'll wait till after the meeting.
You know, this is certainly a proud moment for the police department and those members of the department who are going to be elevated and some new recruits who are going to be sworn in tonight. It's a great night for the police department, as evidenced by the members of the department who have come. I think the council is aware that with the retirement of Captain Allen, who became the police chief in Charleston, that there's some vacancies within the ranks of the department. And pursuant to the rules and regulations of the department, we started the promotional process. I'm proud to say for the rank of captain, we had five finalists. And part of the process is an oral interview, and the rules and regulations require that the oral interview for the rank of captain consists of three police chiefs in addition to me, for a total of four. One of the things that I'm most proud of is that the interview panel all said to me, "Hey, chief, it's too bad you didn't have five captains to make, because any one of them could have filled the shoes." But of course, in a process such as that, the cream rises to the top. And I'm here tonight to promote and swear in Captain Joel Yuan Chow. With his elevation, that created a vacancy in the rank of sergeant, and there was an existing list of eligible people for sergeant. And on top of that list was Montefax Houghton, who many of you already know, and I'm proud to promote him to the rank of sergeant tonight. In addition to that, we have two new recruits who graduated from the police academy on December 19th. There was a class of 49 recruits in the Rhode Island Municipal Police Academy. One of our recruits, Evan Johnson, finished number one in the class, and he was the class valedictorian. And the second candidate, Kevin Rin, finished number five. What a great representation that was for the town of South Kingstown. I was so proud to attend their graduation. So with your permission, Madam President, members of the council, I'd like to officially swear them into the new positions. And I would invite Captain Yuan Chow and Sergeant Monte Houghton and the two recruits to join me here in front of the podium. And also Sergeant Fred Buco, would you come up also, Fred? Are you here? I'll swear you in first, Captain, and then you, Sergeant, and then both of the recruits together. Okay, thank you. So why don't you just come forward and raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I..." and repeat your name or state your name. "I..."
"I, Joel Yuan Chow."
"...to solemnly swear or affirm..."
"To solemnly swear."
"...that I will be true and faithful..."
"...that I will be true and faithful..."
"...unto the town of South Kingstown..."
"...unto the town of South Kingstown."
"...and support the laws and ordinances thereof..."
"...support the laws and ordinances thereof."
"...as well as the laws and constitution of the United States..."
"...as well as the laws and constitution of the United States."
"...and the state of Rhode Island."
"...and the state of Rhode Island."
"...and that I will well and truly execute..."
"...and that I will well and truly execute..."
"...the office of captain of operations..."
"...the office of captain of operations."
"...of the South Kingstown Police Department..."
"...of the South Kingstown Police Department."
"...for the term for which I have been appointed..."
"...for the term for which I have been appointed."
"...or until another be engaged in my place..."
"...or until another be engaged in my place."
"...or until I be legally discharged therefrom."
"...or until I be legally discharged therefrom."
Congratulations, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Montefax W. Houghton."
"I, Montefax W. Houghton."
The fourth.
The fourth.
"To solemnly swear or affirm..."
"To solemnly swear."
"...that I will be true and faithful..."
"...that I will be true and faithful."
"...unto the town of South Kingstown..."
"...unto the town of South Kingstown."
"...and support the laws and ordinances thereof..."
"...and support the laws and ordinances thereof."
"...as well as the laws and constitution of the United States..."
"...as well as the laws and constitution of the United States."
"...and the state of Rhode Island..."
"...and the state of Rhode Island."
"...and that I will well and truly execute..."
"...and that I will well and truly execute..."
"...the office of sergeant..."
"...the office of sergeant."
"...of the South Kingstown Police Department..."
"...of the South Kingstown Police Department."
"...for the term for which I have been appointed..."
"...for the term for which I have been appointed."
"...or until another be engaged in my place..."
"...or until another be engaged in my place."
"...or until I be legally discharged therefrom."
"...or until I be legally discharged therefrom."
Congratulations, Sarge.
Thank you, sir.
Officer Brandon Johnson, why don't you come forward, please? And I'm going to swear you both in together. When I ask you to state your name, state your name, and we'll proceed from there. "I..."
"Officer Johnson."
Okay. "To solemnly swear or affirm..."
"To solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States..."
"...that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Rhode Island."
"...and the state of Rhode Island."
"...that I will observe the provisions..."
"...that I will observe the provisions."
"...of the charter and ordinances..."
"...of charter and ordinances."
"...of the town of South Kingstown..."
"...of the town of South Kingstown."
"...and will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"...and will faithfully discharge the duties."
"...as a member of the South Kingstown Police Department..."
"...as a member of the South Kingstown Police Department."
"...that I shall always be loyal to my duty..."
"...that I shall always be loyal to my duty."
"...and my organization."
"...and my organization."
"...and that I recognize the badge of my office..."
"...and that I recognize the badge of my office."
"...as a symbol of public faith and trust."
"...as a symbol of public faith and trust."
"...I pledge to constantly strive to achieve the objectives and ideals..." "...I pledge to constantly strive to achieve..."
"...I pledge to constantly strive to achieve."
"...the objectives and ideals..."
"...the objectives and ideals."
"...of law enforcement."
"...of law enforcement."
Okay. "And will be true to the ethic of police service..."
"...and will be true to the ethic of police service."
"...as a South Kingstown Police Department member."
"...as a South Kingstown Police Department member."
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Oh, come on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, also with us tonight is Sergeant Alfred Buco, who has been elevated to the position of detective commander. It's a very important position within the department. I thought it only appropriate that we introduce him to the people of South Kingstown and also to the council. Wave to these nice people there. Now, we're going to go into the ante room and have a little party. Please continue with your business.
Before you do depart, I just want to say congratulations to all, a heartfelt, warm welcome here from the town council. And also, a thank you to all of your families for sharing your wonderful, you know, these five wonderful men. And if you could just stand and be acknowledged to, the families.
I thought maybe before we leave, if anybody wanted to come forward and take some pictures, would that be appropriate?
That would be great.
Anybody want to come forward and take some pictures?
So a thank you to the families, and this is truly a special night in the town council chambers. Thank you. Congratulations.
Take the pictures.
Adorable. Look at him.
This is the best.
He's priceless.
And have your families take the pictures. This is the best part. We love this.
Come on, right up front.
Who's that? No one, do you know? Which one? Oh, that camera.
Sure. Sure. Look at how cute.
That little kid with the tie on. Oh, my God. He's priceless.
I know.
Monte's little baby.
I know. Wonderful. We appreciate that.
You need to clone him. That...
Oh, how cute.
There we go. All right.
Oh, look at how cute.
Where's your wife, Monte? She's got to get in the picture, too. How cute.
Like the color jam is blue and white.
He's got SK colors.
SK colors.
He's looking at the chief.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, wonderful.
So Evan and Kevin, no kids, no wives yet? Oh.
Oh, Ellen, you might be pushing the button.
You're going to get in the picture, too.
Do, do. Get the pictures done.
I'm just going to say hi to him.
Oh, that's great. Don't do that. That's good.
I want to go.
Congratulations.
Okay, I said that it did great. Fifteen minutes, so I'm glad you had a good time. It's a good, good...
Good stuff. Good stuff.
He's a... He's a lovely man, as you know. So, are you with the town guys? Oh, okay. Yeah, we're kind of very encouraging to work for years.
Congratulations.
Thanks, you're a good kid.
Now, you just take one step at a time. And when you get through, that was a real credit to you. I mean, I know it wasn't easy. It was great. Yeah, probably not fast enough sometimes. That was his professional...
Big night out.
Congratulations, buddy. Well, you know, it was funny. He was doing it a nice little... Suddenly, like, gave you a whole paragraph, and you were like... You probably both were like, "Oh, that's fantastic."
Hey, Fred, you're good. Why was Kirk...
It was good that you hit it, but didn't say anything.
All good.
Well done, fellas. Congratulations. Turnout, multiple preseason.
Excellent.
So you guys both on duty right now? Okay. I didn't know if you had the same shift. Nice little break.
Yep. Congratulations. Congratulations.
If not, here's my license number, so you don't...
All right, I was called the class... I was called the class, Kelly. My parents coming back from a parent teaching thing at LaSalle. You know, that went over to my father, who was a principal of the size of eyes.
(mumbling)
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 Good stuff. Good stuff.
(mumbling)
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 Congratulations.
Thanks, you're a good kid.
You take one step at a time.
And when you get through, that was a real credit to you.
I mean, I know it wasn't easy.
It was great.
Yeah, probably not fast enough sometimes.
(laughing)
(mumbling)
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 (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) (mumbling) Well, you know, it was funny. He was doing it a nice little... Suddenly, like, gave you a whole paragraph, and you were like... You probably both were like, "Oh, that's fantastic."
Hey, Fred, you're good. You're always correct.
(laughing) (mumbling) 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 Excellent. (mumbling) So you guys both on duty right now? Okay. I didn't know if you had the same shift. Nice little break.
Yep. Congratulations. Congratulations.
If not, here's my license number, so you don't...
All right, I was called the class, Kelly. My parents coming back from a parent teaching thing at LaSalle. At the class pow, you know. That went over to my father, who was a principal of the size of eyes.
But it's good to have change, actually. Good to have change, you know. I think Jerry's great for the school, and a great personality. I think so.
(mumbling)
You know, there are days I say, "Oh, I really miss him."
And then there are days you say, "I really don't."
(laughing) This is Monte. He's the fifth.
None of Monte.
Yep.
Monte, how old is he?
He's seven months. He's 23 pounds.
Hey, Monte! You used to take... You and my daughter at big packets. You used to come home in New York.
Doesn't she work in West Philly? Or she works?
She does.
Yeah, because I've seen her there.
But she's still in teaching now, so...
Oh. Because we work... So you're Knox... You're related to Mark, then?
Yeah, Mark's my brother.
Mark's your brother, okay.
Yes. Yeah, he's my brother.
Oh, okay.
And then she... (mumbling)
Just take the hammer.
I think we talked about him, but I...
Every day, I've been throwing stuff out. I'm trying to clean, pack. Oh, no. Well, I get the key first, and I've got all... Actually, I can't get out of my place till the 10th of March. So I got... I told Steve that the other day. He goes, "Oh, you seem procrastinating a little bit." Luckily, I got my... I ran into my nephew who's out of college, and he said, "Oh, we just moved my parents from Jamestown to cross the gummas into those condos." And he goes, "We can move you." "Well, we'll move you." I got a couple of my buddies, "We'll move you."
Have you moved you? Are you done?
Oh, no. I've barely scratched the surface. It seems like...
But who's a good... You get rid of stuff.
I'm getting rid of stuff. I'm trying to clean, too. Then I'm going to have that... Once I get everything out of there, I'm going to pay... And I have somebody come in and just clean it. You know, a couple hundred bucks, clean the place, you know, so...
You're going to feel good when you're in a new place.
Oh, I will. I'm going to be neat.
Close to the town.
Neat. I'm trying.
Well, that was nice.
That was very nice.
Beautiful. That was one of the best nights.
Yeah, let's call it a night.
No, let's end on a high note.
Okay, I'm going to proceed. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of January 8th, 2013.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have the regular session, January 14th, 2013.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, and our closed executive session of January 14th.
I move approval of that closed executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any town council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Hearing none, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to our public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing relative to the proposed fiscal year 2013-14 to fiscal year 2018-19, capital improvement program as shown on exhibit one attached here, too. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
The capital improvement program presentation tonight is a summary of the 123 pages of the financial planning document entitled Capital Improvement Program 2013-14 through 2018-19. The document looks at five different areas. First is community financial position, both from a perspective and a historic review of the town's debt level, as well as debt service requirements, as well as community demographics. Second component looks at a comprehensive listing of capital improvements that span across the next six years for all municipal departments, including utilities and school department. At this time, there's 15 projects that are listed within that program. If all were completed within the dollar amounts allocated, the cost would be approximately $20.4 million. Of that sum, 50% of that would come through bonding authorizations. Of the $10,250,000 in new bonds that would be required, $5.5 million have already been authorized by the voters. The remaining 4.7 would go for referendum in November of 2014, if so directed by the town council. The projects listed are broken into several categories. One is the leisure service program, which looks at open space acquisitions, beach improvements, senior service improvements, neighborhood guild, and the potential development and construction of a community recreation center. The second category is general municipal projects. Those include improvements in the town's information technology program, as well as dealing with revaluation, public safety facilities, and town hall improvements, and energy program enhancements. Third category is with the school department. At this point, there is a total of $2.6 million anticipated to be expended for improvements to all of the existing... Several of the existing school buildings within the district. The last category is within utilities. Within that program, there's one project that looks at the construction of an East Mattoonik Beach water main bypass, which would provide a second means of water travel to the South Shore water system. The third area within the capital improvement program is a benchmarking of South Kingstown's financial position as it relates to credit industry criteria. As noted in the work sessions that was held on the CIP, the town is in a very good financial position, and our debt position is excellent. In fact, a recent study showed South Kingstown as the lowest larger-sized community in Rhode Island is debt per capita. The next section is a costing on fair share development fees, exemptions for fees for affordable housing units, and what the cost would be if fees for affordable housing units through the subdivision process were employed. The zoning ordinance and subdivision regs require an annual recalc. There are no changes being recommended this year over the existing year fee schedule. The final element of the capital improvement program looks at the pay-as-you-go portion or the capital budget, which will be a component of the 2013-2014 operating budgets. Exhibit one, within the council's agenda tonight, provides a general summary of the projects. If we go through that first exhibit, the project breakout is one for the general fund. General fund program is proposed in the amount of $1,232,000 with 15 different projects or funding allocations. That's up about $22,000 of what the current year appropriation level is in the 2012-2013 year. In the water fund, we're looking at an increase of $42,000 up to $102,000. The $42,000 increase will be dealt with because there... We had a five-year debt schedule that was retired in the 2012 year of about $46,000, which is for the acquisition of new water meters for the South Shore and Middle Bridge water systems. So by the drop-off in the debt service associated with the water fund, we would be able to accomplish additional capital improvements without having impact on the rate base itself. Moving on to page two of the exhibit one, under the wastewater program, we're looking at six project components, $325,000 or about an $18,000 increase over the current year allocation. The final category is in the school department, where they're asking for $255,000, which would be a reduction of $35,000. which would be a, a reduction of $35,000 from what was budgeted in the capital improvement program for schools. However, subsequent to the adoption of the capital improvement program for the school fund last year, there was a reduction made of $60,000 in the 2012-2013 final appropriation. So there really is a net increase from what was actually appropriated, which was $130,000. The revised number would have been $130,000 or $25,000. The increase is a $25,000 increase over what the net capital improvement program was for the school fund. When we move on, I mentioned earlier, the long-term capital projects, 15 programs, each shown on page 32 in the budget document, for a total of $20,379,010, of which 50% would come from bonding. The final page on the capital improvement summary shows fees associated with fair share for the education facilities, where we look at senior, single and duplex unit fees remaining at $3,244. The multi-household, two bedrooms or less would be at 50% of that cost, and the accessory would be at a 75% discount. Recreation facilities, fair share fees would be at $28.67 for single household fees, which is the same as the current year. The two bedrooms or less would be at $2,150. We've done a recalc on the in lieu fees. The recalibration shows that the average sale price in South Kingstown at $280,000, less the maximum sale price for affordable housing units, which was calculated at $220,000. If an in lieu fee were required to be assessed, it would be a fee of $60,000. That fee is down from $83,000 in the current year, the reason being that the cost associated with the maximum purchase price for affordable housing unit went from $207,000 up to $220,000. The reason for that increase is directly related to lower borrowing costs associated with a 30-year mortgage. So there was a reduction in that fee of around $23,000. That concludes the general presentation relative to the capital improvement program. I'd be glad to entertain any questions from the council or from the general public as far as any of the projects listed.
Any questions here?
Thank you. Yes, Steve, you, obviously, you know, we let everyone know that this is a planning document. Have you heard back from the school department? I know we requested that they consider immediately funding a new audit, facilities audit for their schools. Where do we stand on that? Are they in full agreement?
I think that there is full agreement. What the school department had, the school committee had spoken about was commissioning that study before the end of this fiscal year, so it would come out of the 12-13 year. The specs have been developed. I've talked with Mr. Rashart. They're prepared to go. I would expect that they will probably have that as a, as a program proposal before the school committee for contract award, probably in April. So yes, I believe it will be done. We've talked about the necessity of that project being completed on or about August 15th, and I believe that the school committee is also looking to have that building assessment completed.
Anything else? Do you have anything else? Anything from you, Paul? Anybody from the public like to comment? Please come forward.
I do have another question.
Of course.
Steve, the South Kingstown average sale price, single-family home in 2011, $280,000. Have we had a chance to calculate that for 2012?
Well, the, the 2012 cost for the, what we use as an average sale price is based on the information that comes between, all house sales between January and August comes from the Warren Group.
Okay.
So that's the figures, that, that's the, the reference base that we use.
And although it's not quite related, but it is related, noticing here, a work session before fiscal year 2012-13, we had an average house assessment in South Kingstown, a little over $350,000.
Right, there's a difference. The average sale price is different from what the assessment.
Precisely. Any idea what the assessments coming forward, how close we're going to be to that $350,000 number?
At this point, I haven't seen any preliminary numbers. I've seen some, I've seen some test data that looks at probably in the 6% to 8% range of a dis, of a reduction from current year. But I haven't been able to look at more than one class of property, so it would be premature to suggest that that's where it's going to fall.
But nothing like what took place at 2009, December.
No, it doesn't appear to be.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We should have those values, Jim, should be out probably in the last week of April, I'm sorry, the last week of February, first week of March, and we'll start hearings with the revale company sometime in March.
Okay, continue on.
Are we?
I'm not going to let you continue with it.
Oh, no, please do. I've missed, are we at questions from town council?
Yeah, we did, questions from town council, but Jim's still talking, and we all already did questions from the public, nobody came forward, and then Jim wanted to say, ask another question, so.
Covered all that.
Okay, thank you.
We'll probably close as soon as Jim wraps it up.
I'm sorry. Well, what I'm interested here is looking at the numbers that Steve and Alan have given to us earlier this month. Our average house price stays, you know, 3%, 4%, 5% down, but a lot of the, what Moody's, I don't know about Fitch, Standard &amp; Poor, but we're certainly closing in on a AAA potential rating with a number of our ratios. Which one are you most concerned about with the economy and maybe a no growth in South Kingstown?
I don't think that we will see a AAA rating. We're, we're at the highest rating of a double. I don't think you'll see that unless you saw a major change in the unassigned fund balance. And also, I think that the economy is still working against all the municipalities.
Right.
The tax roll going back prior to the last revale was at about $5.2 billion. If we were to lose the 5% to 8%, we'd be around $4 billion. So what you're seeing is an erosion over a five-year period where you would see as much as almost a 20% decline in what average values would be. That would be something that, that rating agencies would, would be looking at, but I don't see that this would jeopardize the AA1 rating that, that we hold. But I think it's just a case where those are, those are probably the only benchmarks that, that I would look at. Our debt ratios are well above even what the national averages would be for, in some cases, even the Triple As.
Right.
But undesigned or unassigned fund balance could be as high as 25% with Triple As.
Wow.
That would take you to well in excess of, you know, $22, $25 million.
Only half that.
The value of a AAA rating for the amount of times that we would be in the market to having to set aside that type of reserve wouldn't be justifiable.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think Alan's got a comment.
Yeah, Jim, I'd just like to kind of echo what Steve said. The concern I would have is on the assessed valuation, because the, the last rating that we got from Moody's was done prior to the last revale. So that one where we took a double-digit hit on the decrease on the values, and then this one coming up where we see the 6% drop. I think the other thing is the fund balance, and any erosion of fund balance below the current level would be clearly something that they would look at, and it would be more of a downgrade than it would be anything. I don't see any upgrades in the future based on the state of the economy in Rhode Island, but clearly any erosion of that fund balance could lead to a reduction in the rating.
Well, okay, thank you.
Any other questions here from the town council? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ian, can we have a motion for the capital improvement program?
I move approval of the capital improvement program for the year 2013 through 2014 to the year 2018 through 2019, as shown on exhibit one attached here too.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just like to thank again Steve and Alan and all of the town staff for the work that they've put into this capital improvement program. It's an impressive document, and we value the time and effort that's been put into it. Thank you. Next on the item on the agenda is comments from interested citizens. At this time, we're going to open the mic. If anyone would like to come and make a comment. Seeing none. I just want to mention a few dates. January 31st, this Thursday, is the Affordable Housing Winter Forum for Washington County communities. I'm at 7 o'clock here in the town chambers, so I strongly encourage as many town councilors that can attend that. I will not be able to attend, I will be out of state. And.
Out of state.
We also have a meeting with the planning board on February 19th, and economic development on February 21st. And I just wanted to remind people that on February 6th, again, I will not be in state, is the Union Fire District Award Ceremony, and I believe that there are proclamations being drawn up for the town council to present that night.
I'll be there. Anybody else coming? Meg, Jim, to the award ceremony for the Union Fire District?
Yes.
Paul? It's at the Elks. Oh.
It isn't a date.
Okay. Anybody else have any other dates? Okay, Ian, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred for the town manager's report.
Just a single item, two references. In the January 24th manager's report, item D, I gave you a summary of the meeting that Michael and I had with representatives from the Elks. Council had asked us to bring that back to this meeting. The Elks committee has indicated that they'd like an opportunity to come back and speak with Michael and I, and then report back to the council. At this point, tentatively, it looks like it would be for the meeting, second meeting in, in February.
And Steve, did you invite them to come to join us at the meeting, to say a few words about the Elks?
Yes, they would, they would come in on the 24th.
Oh, good.
That's what we think. It may be extended, it depends on the next meeting that we have with them. It'll be up to them, because we told them that we were ready to, if they wanted to come in tonight, and they said, no, they needed an opportunity to consider a couple of issues.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to the town solicitors' report.
And unless there are questions.
Any questions for Michael? Seeing none, we're on to appointments.
I'd like to move that we appoint Leslie Shinard to the Housing Authority. Her term would go for five years, commencing tonight, January 28th, 2013, and going for five years to January 28th, 2018.
And I will second that.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sure Leslie will be a welcome to the Housing Authority?
I should have probably prefaced that, that Leslie's been very active in the community, and she's been on many committees, and we see her everywhere, and we'll appreciate her service.
I'll second that. No, no, that's very true. She's, she's been wonderful, wonderful addition to this community.
Remarkable woman. Which brings us to new business. Item 13, this is a resolution authorizing the amendment and extension of an award of bid originally granted on March 28th, 2005, and amended on June 12th, 2006, December 8th, 2008, and April 25th, 2011, to CDM Smith Incorporated, formerly known as Camp Dresser &amp; McKee. One, Cambridge Place, 50 Hampshire Street, Cambridge, Massachusetts, for web GIS internet programming services for an amount not to exceed $45,000 to an amount not to exceed $60,675, and as further described in a memorandum from the GIS administrator to the town manager dated January 17th, 2013, and entitled Proposed CDM Smith Contract Amendment and Expansion.
This resolution provides continuation of the business relationship that the town has enjoyed with CDM, which is now CDM Smith, Inc., or Camp Dresser &amp; McKee is now CDM Smith, since, since 2005. The increase this evening is for $20,675. What that will provide is $5,000 for continued services and continued development and uses for in-house services associated with the GIS system. It'll also provide $5,000 for each of the next two years for them to continue to host the web GIS on behalf of the town. And third, it will provide $5,675, which would be used for mobile GIS applications. What we're doing is moving into iPad uses in the field, particularly in terms of dealing with wastewater, water, and storm, storm drainage improvements, as well as record-keeping. This will provide us with an opportunity to be able to use that and increase efficiencies. At this point, the software and hardware that we've been using is out of date and is in need of replacement. Currently, what we would do is do the information collections in the field, and then have to download that back at the town hall. This would provide us with the ability to be able to do updates of the materials in the cloud itself, and to be able to see all of the records on each piece of equipment or on each infrastructure component onsite, as well as to photograph it if necessary, where those types of things would be important for future use. So we're looking at this, dollars were appropriated in the current year budget for the equipment necessary. The $5,600 will work in conjunction with being able to take that GIS application for the utilities division and put it into play. So that's the $20,675 that's proposed for the amended contract amount this evening.
Thank you, Steve. Can I have a motion, please?
See no questions, and I move approval of new business resolution A.
New Business 13A.
13A.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business 13B is a resolution authorizing the town manager, on behalf of the town of South Kingstown, to sign and accept the document entitled Conservation Easement Facade Preservation with regard to the Paul Massey Chevrolet premises located at 375 to 399 Main Street. Assesses plot 56-3, lot 55, said easement is further described in a memorandum from the director of planning to the town manager dated January 23rd, 2013, and entitled Authorization to Accept Conservation Easement for Facade Preservation.
I think you all, the council is well aware that Paul Massey leases space on Main Street for the Chevrolet dealership. The owner of that property is Don and Marie Penta. The Pentas have provided a willingness to the town, for the town to accept an architectural control on the exterior of that building, which currently houses the Chevrolet dealership. What that would do is to preclude any type of changes to the exterior of that building that would not be in keeping with the historical character of the building itself. We're appreciative of the offer that's been made through Mr. Penta. There are a couple of conditions. One is that the encumbrance on the property would last only as long as the lease agreement. One is that the encumbrance on the property would last only as long as the lease agreement is in place, the current lease agreement is in place for the current dealership. Were the dealership to leave that location, the easement would expire. The town has had concerns that Chevrolet requirements, Chevrolet corporate requirements for branding purposes, would propose to make exterior changes to the building with construction of a new facade on the front, which really wouldn't be in keeping with the looks of that building, as well as a painting of the granite to white. Both of those seem inappropriate. The owner of the property agrees and is willing to provide the town with architectural control over the aesthetic appearance of that building, which we recommend the council provide authorization to accept.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have motion?
I'd just like to point out that Paul Massey is in total agreement on this also. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I move that we authorize the town manager to sign and accept on behalf of the town of South Kingston, the document entitled Conservation Easement Facade Preservation with regard to the premises at Assesses Lot 56-3, Lot 55, 375-399 Main Street, also known as Paul Massey Chevrolet.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah, really, I've got to thank planning and Steve on this. The community is going to be very proud of this conservation easement that's been put together, so, thank you. And thank you on behalf of all the parties.
I'd like to also suggest that we send a letter of appreciation to Mr. and Mrs. Penta for working with the community on this matter.
Can I just...
I'm going to do include that for a second.
I'd just like to ask also, is this going to stop Chevrolet from insisting on this facade?
Yes, it will. According to the reviews that have been made, that if it is legally impossible for the improvement to be made, it won't jeopardize the franchise.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. At this time, it brings us to motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:23. Thank you.
Bye.